We proceed each council meeting with a word of prayer and pledge of allegiance if you'd like. Please feel free to join us. Ms. Isby, could I get you to work our prayers?
Sure. If you'll bow with me, our gracious heavenly father, we thank you, Lord, for all the abundant blessings that you've given us. We thank you, Lord, for ending one year and starting out with one anew. We just ask, Lord, that you continue to lead and guide us in the way that you would have us to go, and we will forever give you the glory that you are so deserving of.
You folks this year, Drew Spurgers is our new representative, Ward Two.
Yes.
And Ms. Denise Hurd is our new city clerk.
All right.
The rest of you look the same. I'm a little heavier and a little more balder, but you know, it's okay.
Mr. Mayor, before we get started, could we, I don't know if you were going to point out-
I was there, after you.
We have a couple of recognitions from the Conway Area Leadership Institute. Last night, our very own Ms. Felicia Rogers was named the Dam Knabholz Emerging Leader.
Oh, I love that.
Jake Riley was named the class champion, so he's a graduate as of yesterday, and so I think they represent-
I was there for it, and Felicia did a wonderful job with her speech. And Jake, now this is a guy who has seen combat, and he was more worried about getting up there and giving that speech, I think, than he was to fly a Blackhawk helicopter. Now call this meeting to order. Ms. Hurd, will you call the roll?
Mr. Hawkins.
Here.
Mr. Grimes.
Here.
Mr. Spurgers.
Here.
Ms. Mel.
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Here.
Mr. Hawks.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Isby.
Here.
You should have received copies of the December 10, 2024 City Council meeting, and corrections, changes, or comments.
Make a motion for approval as submitted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the December 10, 2024 minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is eight to zero. First up on the agenda, we have a public hearing for electric revenue improvement bonds for the new operations center campus for Conway Corporation. Mr. Brett Carroll from Conway Corporation will be speaking to this. I guess we need to declare this public hearing open.
Well, good evening. I'm not going to speak long, because I actually brought our CFO, Aaron Brown, to speak on behalf. But I am in favor of speaking for both of these issues, but you know, a couple of projects that we need to complete and are almost completed, at least on the operations center, but we've got to finish the funding for those projects. So I'm going to let Mr. Aaron Brown speak on behalf of these projects.
Mr. Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Aaron, I need to state my name and address.
Let me turn that off.
I'm Aaron Brown, 1620 Rohan Circle, and I'm going to be speaking for these bonds. We are issuing $6 million in electric revenue improvement bonds to complete the construction of the new operations campus on South German Lane. We just ran out of space at the old facility on Harkrader. There was no additional space to expand, so this was much needed. It provides us additional space, additional coverage space for our equipment and all of our inventory. Any questions for me?
Nice looking facility. I had a chance to tour it. It's a great, great facility. Counsel, any questions?
This does not go against our bonds that we have.
It'll be an additional issue. We had issued bonds originally for this project, and due to inflationary pressures, project costs end up being more than what we originally estimated. So we had issued an A and B bond for this, and this will be considered a C portion of those bonds.
And I would like to point out that there is, there will be no rate increase.
That's correct.
That's kind of what it's going to be. When you said "we," you mean Co-My Corporation, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Would anyone else like to speak for or against? Okay.
Karen, what did our total cost come in at? Yes, please.
It's about $39.2.
$39.2, thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing for water revenue improvement bonds for Roger Q Mills Water Treatment Plant and related improvements. You just thought you were going to get sitting down. I will declare this public hearing open.
So this is the, kind of the same story. Inflationary pressures push these costs higher than originally estimated, so we are issuing an additional bond to complete the expansion of our water treatment plant. What this will do is add 8 million gallons a day in treatment capacity to what we already have, bringing the total to 32 million gallons per day. It would just help support the continued growth and demand of the city of Conway. And these are being issued through the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission. We were able to get a very favorable rate there that will actually save us approximately $11 million over the course of the bond in interest compared to what rates we could get in the regular bond market.
And again, this is for Conway Corporation. There's no increase in rates for the citizens. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, counsel? Would anyone else like to speak for or against? We will now declare this public hearing closed. Next, we have the Economic Development Committee. First up is a consideration to approve the waiting of all three readings for the ordinances on the January 14 City Council agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve waiting all three readings for the January 14th, I'm sorry, January 14th, any council agenda. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes eight to zero. First up on the agenda, we have a public hearing for electric revenue improvement bonds for the new operations center campus for Conway Corporation. Mr. Brett Carroll from Conway Corporation will be speaking to this. I guess we need to declare this public hearing open.
Well, good evening. I'm not going to speak long, because I actually brought our CFO, Aaron Brown, to speak on behalf. But I am in favor of speaking for both of these issues, but you know, a couple of projects that we need to complete and are almost completed, at least on the operations center, but we've got to finish the funding for those projects. So I'm going to let Mr. Aaron Brown speak on behalf of these projects.
Mr. Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Aaron, I need to state my name and address.
Let me turn that off.
I'm Aaron Brown, 1620 Rohan Circle, and I'm going to be speaking for these bonds. We are issuing $6 million in electric revenue improvement bonds to complete the construction of the new operations campus on South German Lane. We just ran out of space at the old facility on Harkrader. There was no additional space to expand, so this was much needed. It provides us additional space, additional coverage space for our equipment and all of our inventory. Any questions for me?
Nice looking facility. I had a chance to tour it. It's a great, great facility. Counsel, any questions?
This does not go against our bonds that we have.
It'll be an additional issue. We had issued bonds originally for this project, and due to inflationary pressures, project costs end up being more than what we originally estimated. So we had issued an A and B bond for this, and this will be considered a C portion of those bonds.
And I would like to point out that there is, there will be no rate increase.
That's correct.
That's kind of what it's going to be. I think when you said "we," you mean Co-My Corporation, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Would anyone else like to speak for or against? Okay.
Karen, what did our total cost come in at? Yes, please.
It's about $39.2.
$39.2, thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing for water revenue improvement bonds for Roger Q Mills Water Treatment Plant and related improvements. You just thought you were going to get sitting down. I will declare this public hearing open.
So this is the, kind of the same story. Inflationary pressures push these costs higher than originally estimated, so we are issuing an additional bond to complete the expansion of our water treatment plant. What this will do is add 8 million gallons a day in treatment capacity to what we already have, bringing the total to 32 million gallons per day. It would just help support the continued growth and demand of the city of Conway. And these are being issued through the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission. We were able to get a very favorable rate there that will actually save us approximately $11 million over the course of the bond in interest compared to what rates we could get in the regular bond market.
And again, this is for Conway Corporation. There's no increase in rates for the citizens. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, counsel? Would anyone else like to speak for or against? We will now declare this public hearing closed. Next, we have the Economic Development Committee. First up is a consideration to approve the waiting of all three readings for the ordinances on the January 14 City Council agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve waiting all three readings for the January 14th, I'm sorry, January 14th, any council agenda. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes eight to zero. First up is an ordinance to approve the issuance and sale of electric revenue improvement bonds for Conway Corporation. Mr. Carroll, I have you down as being at the podium. Whoever you want, whoever you'd like to send, in case there's any questions.
That wasn't you that made my phone ring a while ago. I responded to a text. Sorry about that. Yeah, so, yeah, we probably would have brought both of those bond issues tonight, but Mr. Gordon Webber wasn't able to be here for the water one, so, yeah, we are looking forward to getting the ordinance passed for the $6 million to complete the construction for our operations center. Any questions for me? Of course, that's going to give us, this may be a little more than you want to know, but as you know, we're moving from, or almost completely moved from the service center that we were at. It was about 12 acres, which I think the city street department's going to be using. And then, you know, this will give us, we have probably about 50 to 60 acres of buildable land, so we've got growth for years to come. Also, there's a transmission line that runs through that piece of property that will allow for a substation in the future, should we need it. So we're really pleased. It's also, we've tied it into the former wastewater treatment facility, Stone Down, that you guys may be aware of. You know, we decommissioned that plant some time ago, but we're also using that for an educational facility, for storing our electric poles on that, and so it's really, we've kind of tied those two pieces of property together, which will give us years of growth, so we're very proud of how that turned out for us. Any questions for me?
I'm glad you said that about the waste, because people have been asking me what was going on over there. I said, "Thank you."
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah.
Counsel, back to you.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance O2501.
There it is.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance for the issuance and sale of electric revenue improvement bonds for Conway Corporation. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Next up is the community development committee. Mr. Hawkins.
Yes. Mr. Grimes.
Here.
Mr. Spurgers.
Here.
Ms. Mel.
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Here.
Mr. Hawks.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Isby.
Here.
You should have received copies of the December 10, 2024 City Council meeting, and corrections, changes, or comments.
Make a motion for approval as submitted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the December 10, 2024 minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is eight to zero. First up on the agenda, we have a public hearing for electric revenue improvement bonds for the Roger Q Mills Water Treatment Plant and related improvements. You just thought you were going to get sitting down. I will declare this public hearing open.
So this is the, kind of the same story. Inflationary pressures push these costs higher than originally estimated, so we are issuing an additional bond to complete the expansion of our water treatment plant. What this will do is add 8 million gallons a day in treatment capacity to what we already have, bringing the total to 32 million gallons per day. It would just help support the continued growth and demand of the city of Conway. And these are being issued through the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission. We were able to get a very favorable rate there that will actually save us approximately $11 million over the course of the bond in interest compared to what rates we could get in the regular bond market.
And again, this is for Conway Corporation. There's no increase in rates for the citizens. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, counsel? Would anyone else like to speak for or against? We will now declare this public hearing closed. Next, we have the Economic Development Committee. First up is a consideration to approve the waiting of all three readings for the ordinances on the January 14 City Council agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve waiting all three readings for the January 14th, I'm sorry, January 14th, any council agenda. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes eight to zero. First up is an ordinance to approve the issuance and sale of electric revenue improvement bonds for Conway Corporation. Mr. Carroll, I have you down as being at the podium. Whoever you want, whoever you'd like to send, in case there's any questions.
That wasn't you that made my phone ring a while ago. I responded to a text. Sorry about that. Yeah, so, yeah, we probably would have brought both of those bond issues tonight, but Mr. Gordon Webber couldn't, wasn't able to be here for the water one, so, yeah, we are looking forward to getting the ordinance passed for the $6 million to complete the construction for our operations center. Any questions for me? Of course, that's going to give us, this may be a little more than you want to know, but as you know, we're moving from, or almost completely moved from the service center that we were at. It was about 12 acres, which I think the city street department's going to be using. And then, you know, this will give us, we have probably about 50 to 60 acres of buildable land, so we've got growth for years to come. Also, there's a transmission line that runs through that piece of property that will allow for a substation in the future, should we need it. So we're really pleased. It's also, we've tied it into the former wastewater treatment facility, Stone Down, that you guys may be aware of. You know, we decommissioned that plant some time ago, but we're also using that for an educational facility, for storing our electric poles on that, and so it's really, we've kind of tied those two pieces of property together, which will give us years of growth, so we're very proud of how that turned out for us. Any questions for me?
I'm glad you said that about the waste, because people have been asking me what was going on over there. I said, "Thank you."
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah.
Counsel, back to you.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance O2501.
There it is.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance for the issuance and sale of electric revenue improvement bonds for Conway Corporation. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
O2501. Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Ms. Isby.
Yes.
Ms. Mel.
Aye.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye.
Mr. Hawks.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Passes eight to zero. Next up is the community development committee. Mr. Hawkins, sir, I will turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on this portion of the agenda is a resolution to approve the organizational rules and procedures for the city of Conway for fiscal year 2025.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution, which is typically what we do at the beginning of each year, and that should be Resolution R0501.
I have a, okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the rules and procedures of the city of Conway for 2025.
And if I could, just as a reminder, on page two, it mentions that business shall be conducted by Robert's Rules of Order. However, it's understood that parliamentary procedure is not the goal. The goal is respectful conduct of business. Most people don't know we're not parliamentarians. We do make motions in seconds, but the goal is orderly meeting, not sticklers of the Robert's Rules of Order. Just a reminder.
Correct. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve the nomination of Jennifer Welter to the Conway Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, and I move that we accept this nomination.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this nomination of the Conway Housing Authority Board. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to appropriate funding for capital improvement projects at the Conway Regional Airport, and...
This is a-
Jake, come up and tell us something good.
This is a good one.
I like it.
Good evening. Yes, this is fantastic. I kind of went back and forth with the FAA funding for the coming up project that they've known about for at least three years since I've been out there. They weren't going to fund it, and they were, and now they're going to fund the next three years as long as we pay $40,000, which we're lucky enough to have in the airport fund, so it's not coming out of the general fund, it's just the airport fund that we have, which is great. So we're going to get the next three-year projects, so about $5 million worth of federal funding for 40 grand.
I'll take that every day.
All day long.
I'll take that every-
That's a good one.
I think it's a wise call.
So that's going to be runway extension, 500-foot extension, a taxiway extension, and then the entire length of the taxiway will be rehabbed, so the joints and the markings will be, the joints will be fixed and the markings will be repaired for 40 grand.
And this allows for larger jets.
Absolutely, yes, sir. Cheaper insurance, bigger planes, stuff like that.
Good deal.
Absolutely.
What's the runway length when this 500 is added?
It'll be 6,000 foot. Right now, it's 5,500.
Okay. And to the mayor's point, what would that allow us to?
So it'll be longer jets, so we're very fortunate that our runway length and width is what it is now. So that brings some people, I don't want to call any cities out, but planes that can't get in otherwise, other airports, into us. So making us larger and longer will help bring some of that out. So it'll be just larger jets that can go year-round as well. So sometimes you're kind of cut short with what you can do during the summer when it's hot for fuel and weight and stuff like that. So it'll help out some of our larger planes that we have on, at the city, and then different airports come in and getting fuel from us, so.
Could our airport be used as an emergency airport?
For some planes, so like the C-130s, they weigh too much. A lot of it's weight, weight-based, so it depends on the plane, and we do get calls sometimes. We had one a couple of weeks ago, and it was a smaller plane, but yes, absolutely. So, and all that's, if they have to, I mean, landing a C-130 on our runway is not going to kill it a couple of times, but you don't want to do it regularly and just keep, so, but absolutely for emergencies, yes.
So it's big enough for Mr. Jones to set his jet down?
Yeah, that's right. He's been in there a couple of times with it.
Thank you, man.
You're going to get a FOIA request now.
I thought you were talking about Jerry.
That's what I was thinking.
I didn't even want to talk about him.
All right, counsel, what's your place?
I'll make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance O2502, and I know it was mentioned 40 grand, but our match on the ordinance is 36.
It is 36, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance appropriating funds for capital improvements for the airport. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes.
Ms. Mel.
Aye.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye.
Mr. Spurgers.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Isby.
Yes.
Mr. Hawks.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Jake, real quick, start time on projects and the end times on the projects.
So the bidding process should be this spring, I think in April is what we're shooting for now, for the start, for the bids, for that. So it should be completed with this year.
This calendar year.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have, I'm sorry, Mr. Hawkins, it's still you.
Still going here, Mr. Mayor, let's see. Next item we have is an ordinance to set 2025 building permit fee schedule for the permits and inspection department, and come on up and tell us what we need to know.
Good evening. Self-explanatory, it's a very small increase. If you look at the pages, it is an increase, but it's penultimate. It's roughly $3.80 increase per thousand square feet on the commercial and $3.40 per thousand on the residential.
You said $3.40?
Yes. If you see the change, it'll be showing .0038. If you see the change, it'll be showing point zero zero three eight difference between the twenty twenty-four and the twenty twenty-five, increasing from point one zero six two to point eleven, which is eleven cents per total square feet. And that's on the residential. On the commercial, it's increasing from point one three six six to fourteen cents per square feet. There's a few other small increases that you will find there. The minimums were increased in a couple of areas. Our billing reinspection fee remains the same. None of that has changed. And nothing has changed on the calculations.
Okay. Any questions?
It's the reason, just kind of looking at where we were in regards to other cities, or?
This has to do with the cost of construction cost, building materials, and that will fluctuate every year.
Okay.
Any more questions, Mr. Corning?
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance O twenty-five oh three, along with its emergency clause.
Second?
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
And the emergency clause, Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Those both pass eight to zero. Thank you, Cecil.
Thank you.
Mr. Hawkins?
All right, Mr. Mayor. Next item is an ordinance to appropriate funds for the Lynn settlement, and this is for the Transportation Department, and currently, you, yes, you are. Thank you. And by the way, nice pictures of the snow and your people did great, your people did a great job.
They did a great job. They did a fantastic job. We've got a lot of, a lot of great guys that take a lot of pride in taking care of the city of Conway.
Yes, you do.
And they did a, they did an excellent job during the snowfall.
Them doing that was really good. I particularly liked the black and white.
Yeah. So, this is, uh, this is actually just the appropriation of the settlement that y'all had approved previously for the Lynn property that, I guess, and Mr. Finkenbinder can probably help me out a little bit here. This is way before my time, but this was related to the condemnation lawsuit on the property that was acquired for the construction of the Sixth Street overpass over I forty many years ago. And again, this is just appropriating the funds to actually pay that agreed-to settlement that y'all had approved last month.
I can ask a question. Mr. Finkenbinder, this includes any future claims?
Correct.
Correct? So, that was everything we discussed before.
Any claim, that was, that was what was discussed.
Any questions, Mr. Jones?
Oh, good. Move for adoption of the ordinance. I got emergency clause.
Have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
And the emergency clause, Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Those both pass eight to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me, let me, this doesn't apply to you. Let me say something. Everybody has complimented the city on how well the streets were. And I think everybody should give thank you, because our streets were great.
Yes.
And that's, that's got to be a first for me. I'm forty years old. I know, at least forty, but the streets were in great shape, man, great shape.
With that much snow?
Yeah.
I promise.
It was like, it was unreal.
Tremendous job. Thank you. Mr. Hawkins?
Let's see. We have an ordinance now to rezone some property at nine thirty-one Faulkner Street from O three to C one, and I was looking for what the planning commission did, but I can't find it, Ann, so can you tell us?
Well, the planning commission agreed. They sent it to you guys in September of twenty twenty-three.
Well, that's, this is an old.
Yes, it is an old one. So, it's been tabled for over a year. So, it's been tabled for over a year, and Mr. Salter has asked to bring it back, and that's okay. There was a public hearing at the, when it was first brought to you guys, three of the neighbors got up and spoke in opposition to it. Since that time, Mr. Salter has visited with some of the neighbors and has come up with something that he feels is more palatable to everyone. His intentions at this point are to rehab the building that is on, currently on the site and make, I believe, five apartments out of it. That's what it had at one time, and build another building with a little courtyard, housing an additional nine units, one-bedroom apartments. There is no mechanism when something is tabled to notify the public that it's coming back. So, unless they have, are checking the agenda, the neighbors don't know that this has come back. So, Mr. Salter's going to get up and talk about this a little bit. The, he's, he left it at a C one, which is why we don't have to do any notices or anything like that. He has not changed his request. He's just changed his intentions. I think it's my job to give you the worst-case scenario. If he finds out that this is not financially feasible, then we're going to have a piece of C one property in the Robinson Historic District, and by right, I just did a little bit of research, by right, in a C one, you can have a pool hall, you can have a circus, a tobacco store, a dance hall. These are worst-case scenarios. There's a lot of stuff that you can have in C one. You can have an eating place with drive-through, a kennel. Those are all by right in C one. I'll let Mr. Salter tell you his reasoning behind that. With, with the area that he would occupy, you can have in, in, with what he has to work with, he can have fifteen units, which is what I think he's proposing, fourteen is what he's proposing. So, that density also works in MF three. And with that, I'll let Mr. Salter address the council.
Hi there. I'm, I'm the guy with loud mic. I'm Brent Salter with Salter Properties, two zero one Lee Andrew Lane. And yes, it has been a while since I was standing up here the first time, which is why between police and Ann, they felt like it might make sense for me to send an update. So, then, in your packet, which I'm hoping and assuming that you guys have read, is what has transpired since I was here last time. I'm happy to talk through that and reiterate what's, what's in what I wrote. I'm happy to answer any questions, but ultimately, it was the concerns of the neighbors with the commercial use. I met with Dan West, a number of them. One of the, the woman who resided adjacent to the property has sold the property that doesn't even live there anymore. So, after we decided that we would remove the commercial component, I went back to planning and said, okay, we're not going to do the commercial component anymore. Is C one still the appropriate rezoning in order to move this project forward? And the answer was yes. So, that's why I'm not changing the request. That's based on the guidance that was given to me by the planning department, and nothing against what Ann had to say, but I would point out that the piece of property right next to us is C one, and right across the street is C one. So, to think that C one isn't already in the area would, would not be accurate.
Salter, excuse my ignorance here, but I'm looking at this in a map. What is the adjacent property? I see a lot of court buildings, a lot of churches. I mean, there are, there are some residential properties on down the way, Central Baptist College somewhere. So, what is across the street?
So, so directly on the, on the property next to us, if you go towards Caldwell on our side of the street, that's an apartment building today. If you go towards Prince Street, that is a single-family home or a duplex that right, is right there, and then across the street is commercial uses and one residence, I believe. So, there is, there is a mix of all of it right there.
Thank you.
Offices down close, farther to the south. So, so there's history here of having different zones in this particular block.
Yeah, I want to speak to something, and I'm not, not what you're saying. We need to put a mechanism in place where people get noticed when this is brought back. This is, this is not fair to the people. If they don't check the agenda to know that they're bringing this back to the council. I mean, it was people, I'm not saying that they would complain, but that's only fair that they would know in advance, in case they had a complaint, rather than us just pushing it through or whatever. That's just, to me, that's only, oh, I'm sorry. To me, that's only fair that we have some kind of mechanism in place for this. I could be wrong, but I would like to know, because like you said, it's been two thousand twenty-three, and who remembers that? Who remembered it was coming back?
Yeah, I would agree to a point. I mean, this has nothing to do with your application necessarily, but something similar on Reedy Road a couple of months ago, it had been tabled. We did, I think, a December date, but that was three months away from when it was first tabled. You know, things happen, and people forget. So, if we're going to table something, we probably ought to find some way to do something on better notification.
Yeah, I mean, we talk about two thousand twenty-three. I mean, most of us on the council, I'm not going to say, some of us probably don't remember this.
Thank you.
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
I will ask.
Don't look at me because I'm the old guy, I haven't got a problem remembering, but I'm just saying we need some kind of mechanism in place for that.
I'll ask Ann, Ms. Tucker, to work with Mr. Finkenbinder, and we'll come up with an answer to that. I think that's a good point, Mr. Jones.
But I, just, just so you know, Dan West, who is the gentleman who lives on the piece of property behind ours, he's been to my office, I've been to his house, we've met. He said that he's been with the neighbors. They agree with this going, you know, they agree with what we're proposing now that it's solely residential, and it's based on the planning's recommendation that it remain C one as the zoning. And then, as I alluded to in my letter, it's all been, can we make this thing work from a dollars and infrastructure perspective, which is what's taken so long? I'm not, not trying to disregard what you're saying by any means, but.
By any means. I'm just talking in general. If this happens to some other person, we have this issue again, we need to have a mechanism in place to notify the people that it's coming back, not no reflection on you or what you're doing. I'm just saying, in general, if it comes back again, we need, they need to be notified, or we need to figure out a way to notify them. And I have nothing against what you're saying. I'm just, the process, to me, it needs, it's a little flawed and needs to be fixed.
Counsel, back to you. Mr. Hawkins, you have a question?
Develop this, Brent. You're going to?
Yes.
Almost the same type situation is right next door to the south side. It's multifamily, which is basically what this request is. It's a restriction on the number of families that could go. I'll make a motion that we adopt this ordinance.
Second?
And the emergency clause.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance to rezone property located at nine thirty-one Faulkner Street from O three to C one with emergency clause. Any further discussion?
I.
Ms. Hurd, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Isby.
Yeah, I actually just text Dan West, and he was asking, he said he was okay that it was tabled. He's not okay with them having a blank check. Is it back on the agenda? So, I guess he was not aware that it was back on the agenda. And no, nothing against you. I just, like you said, no, Dan. And he was saying that he was okay that it was tabled, but he was, he asked me specifically if it was back on the agenda.
It's in a blank check, though.
No, it's not a blank check.
It's on the agenda, and he may not have known, but it's not a blank check.
Right, right.
I mean, I remember, I was on the planning commission when this came before us, and if I remember, Mr. Salter, the reason you're, you're, you're looking for C one here is because you went to planning staff and said, here's what we want to do, and they said, you need to go for C one.
Correct.
So, here we are, two years later.
Correct.
And you've done what you said you were going to do.
And that's, I mean, someone in my seat, that's really all I can do is go to the city and say, this is what I would like to do, and get their guidance and do that.
On, on the side of notification, in case this hasn't come up previously, I know that brought up a topic with the planning commission, where when Mr. Salter walked in for that meeting, there was an army of people in opposition, and he had no clue. And so, we brought up the planning commission at the time, that an applicant should know if we received a bunch of, or if the city or planning commission has received a bunch of feedback about something, so they're not walking in caught blind, because I remember Mr. Salter walked in and was like, I'm sorry, y'all, I did what I was told to do.
Right.
And no one had said anything. So, that's why we tabled it, and that's why I went to meet with the neighbors, so we could figure out the details. But yes, I was surprised.
And I do need to correct, there is not an emergency clause on this. Mr. Finkenbinder, do you have any thoughts?
The only thing I would suggest going forward that might take care of this is when, anytime a motion that's before the council is tabled, laid on the table, really should be taken up at the next regularly scheduled council meeting. That, that's generally, although to, that's generally the way that tabling works or should work. And as you can see, that's one of the, one of the benefits of handling a tabling motion, for lack of a better phrase, that way, because everybody knows when it's going to be reconsidered by the council. Like. It's not, to Mr. Grimes, it's not absolutely required. It's not mandatory. But it is just a good rule of thumb, and I think this, this case is a good example. The, the concerns of the council are definitely valid, and that's one suggestion from lawyer. That might be a way to handle it. It's just to go be a little more formal with the tabling, and anytime a motion is tabled, that it be set for the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
So, would it be appropriate to table this to the next council meeting in fairness to the neighbors who don't know?
That's a decision the council can make.
I mean, is two weeks, is that horrible? I hate to put you on the spot, but I'm just trying to think about what's fair to the neighbors who don't know, because.
If you don't vote on a motion, then it's, he's in the same situation where you got to resubmit it, right?
If it dies, well, we've already made a motion with a second.
If we vote no, that means he got to wait.
Motion could be withdrawn.
Yeah.
Yes, it can.
I just want there to be a chance for fair.
Yeah, and that, that's me.
I think you've done everything you were asked to do.
Right.
And so, again, it's kind of a weird situation that was more of our making than yours.
Yeah, and I would just speak to his frustration there, like, this is, this is a two-year project where you've done what the city told you to do time and time again, and we keep telling you, sorry, later.
That's what I'm saying, it fixed, you know, it would be at the next council meeting for, if any neighbors have any concerns, they have two weeks to bring it up. And look at your plan, which I think would be reassuring.
Well, so, that was part of the, the reason for the timeline is I went and spent the money on the architect, so I could show the neighbors what I was going to do. I've met with them multiple times. I can't speak for Mr. West, but I bet if the question was asked of him, are you, are you going to have a problem with Brent doing what he said he was going to do for the last year and a half, he wouldn't really have a, a problem with it. So, I, I hear all the sides of it, but it's, it's like I'm, like I'm trying to do the right thing.
You are.
No, you are. You are. Yeah.
Mr. Hawkins, you made the motion. Do you would like your motion to stand or withdraw?
I did make the motion, and I'm going to defer to Mr. Salter. If you want to go ahead and vote, we can sure call a vote tonight, if you'd like to do that. I will do what you want to do.
What, what I want to do and what I'm going to say? What I want to do and what I'm going to say to do are two different things.
I'm going to vote for it tonight, and I'm going to vote for it in two weeks, because I think it fits the neighborhood.
It's what, I mean, the narrative of let's get more residential units in downtown, that's what I'm trying to do, and I continue to get a pushback on achieving that.
So, I mean, that's my opinion, but I, Mr. Salter, I can't count properly sometimes. So I don't know whether, where you are at this point with this group.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm going to say something. In the past job that I had, I learned to listen to people, what people say. And if I remember correctly, you just said before this got started, you talked to Mr. West, and he was for it. And then we get in texts saying that you hadn't.
I have not, I have spoken to him, and he has confirmed that him and the neighbors are good with the project now that the commercial component is gone. It was after that conversation that I got directed from the Planning Commission, Planning Department, about staying with C1. I have not spoken to him about the fact that I tried to get on the agenda for December but wasn't able to, and I'm here today. I have not spoken with Dan West about that.
I just know the text I read said he hadn't talked to you. So I don't know where y'all, what's what. But I just know I remember you saying you talked to him before you started this conversation, he was good. And then texts come in and said he hadn't talked to you. So y'all can do whatever y'all want, but I'm just.
Yes, the neighbors' concerns, and I put it in the letter, the neighbors' concerns are not the use. The neighbors' concerns are about the building being three stories as proposed that I had drawn. And that is a decision for the Historic Commission to make. They're the ones who are in charge of the cladding and the massing and the scaling. I just gotta, before I spend any more dollars on plans, I gotta make sure that the land is zoned properly.
So do you want, would you like for the council to vote?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Ms. Heard.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Oh.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
No.
That passes six to two. Thank you, Mr. Salter. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Sir, Mr. Mayor.
Next up, we have the Public Service Committee. And first up is ordinance to approve the creation of a natural landscaping habitat permit for the Public Works Department. We have Mr. Clausen here to speak to this.
Good evening, everybody. Been working on this for quite a while. We wanted to create a natural landscaping habitat certificate that citizens can apply for. Citizens all over the town are already doing this. They grow natural habitats that require very low maintenance. And what we want to do is create a certificate to kind of regulate it a little bit so that it can't just go completely crazy and benefit. We want to be able to help them be good neighbors by putting a little bit of a guide rails on what they're trying to do. And that's what this certificate will create. Does anybody have any questions about it?
I was going to say, I've had great pleasure of working with Mr. Clausen, because we're one of those people who have created this. Before there was any ordinance, our neighbors are fine-winded. But what was fascinating is a lot of the concerns we had when we were putting it in was, is it going to be too tall, or are the neighbors going to be concerned? Is it confined in a way? And it is. I mean, you just don't want it to be really tall grass and have, you know.
Correct, correct. Yes, it has been good to work with you on this. I've learned a lot through this. Right now, our city ordinance addresses grass, but doesn't really address what types of grass. In a natural landscape, it will allow, basically, for the guidelines that we've put on this to grow really untouched by human hands, is kind of how it's worded. And that will allow citizens to do things that, with the correct offsets and without going too crazy as far as the amount of the yard that it takes up, so that they can continue to be in compliance with our certificate, but again, in a way that doesn't grow offensive to the neighbors.
And that the neighbors know somebody checked it.
Yes, exactly. It's not just unkept. It's unkept per guidelines and approved.
So you mentioned that this gives you more ability to basically enforce what they're doing with it. So this is already happening, but this gives you the ability to put some guardrails around it. What does, like, what does that look like?
Okay, well, what it will do is, say, if you want to have natural landscaping, it allows 25% of your backyard and 10% of your front yard, okay? So that way, you can't just grow anything you want to, as big as you want to, wherever you want to. It also keeps in mind the offsets around the property boundaries. It keeps it five foot from any property boundary. That way, it doesn't encroach over into your neighbor's yard, it doesn't grow and hang over. There's also some height requirements. The height requirements are going to be based on the height of a fence. And if the fence is not present, it's capped at six foot. It can't grow past that. So it's pretty extensive. We're really trying to let people do what they want to do within these parameters, so.
I'm sure I know the answer, but I just want to make sure here, doubly sure.
Yeah.
There's a one-time fee of $35.
Yes, sir.
Right? So I can't, I just, I can't pay you $35 and never mow my yard again.
No, not at all, not at all. In fact, in fact, there is an application we have worked up here that's going to require a site map, and you're going to have to explain how you want it to be so that it can be checked and regulated.
Very good. That was my plan. I was going to tell my wife, I was going to tell my wife I'm never mowing again.
Just want to make sure we're on that loophole there.
No, not at all.
Mr. Clausen, how will this work with POAs who have certain standards for folks on maintaining their yards? Is this going to, if somebody flashes this certificate, are they going to be able to tell their POA, hey, sorry, I'm going to do what I want to do?
Okay, code enforcement does not enforce POA or HLA. We don't enforce their covenants and restrictions. So that's going to have to be something that the HOAs and POAs need to meet on. If they get the certificate, they get the certificate.
Okay. But are they going to be able to come to us and say, we've got a city certificate, we can do what we want? Or are they, does that, is there any empowerment in that?
The city does not get involved in HOs or POs. We're not going to, we're not going to enforce their covenants and restrictions. If they have something that's more restrictive than the city, it's up to them to enforce it in the mechanisms they have in place to enforce that. Okay. So.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Mr. Claus? Counsel, what's your wishes?
I'll make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance. Does note on here that it is 024, should be 025, and it should be ordinance number 06, along with the emergency clause.
Second?
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause? Any further discussion? Ms. Heard.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
And the emergency clause, Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Those both pass eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Claus.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have an ordinance to update the rates for the Conway Expo Center. Mr. Tams, Andrew, if you would, would you give the council just a brief update on the warming centers before we move to this ordinance?
Absolutely. So tonight is going to be our 10th consecutive night having the overnight shelter at Don Owen. We have over 30 beds in our racquetball centers that are set up for men and women separately. We've had over 100 people staying with us during that time. So we're averaging, I would say at this point, probably 125 total, so 13, 14 a night, somewhere in there. We've had a couple of hiccups with it, but we've got everything straightened out as long as we're able to provide a warm place for people overnight with these freezing temperatures. We're happy to do that.
Good job.
We appreciate it.
Awesome.
And Mr. Clausen, I appreciate you and your crew shoveling all the snow and ice. I wish I could say there was ice on the steps that I tripped on today, but they were dry, thanks to your crew. But you did a great job.
You have a lot of slipping and falling, though. Has your doctor asked you that?
Maybe. He asked me a lot of questions, I just can't remember them. All right. Approve the update of rates for the Expo Center, Mr. Tams.
Yes, sir. So a little bit of background, this is a request to increase the rates at the Expo Center. The current rates that we are charging were set in 2010. So 15 years, you can imagine the inflation with wages, utilities have all increased. This is not a grab at revenue by any means. This is to take care of our expenses in-house and try and keep up with the times. The other part of that is this is just expo and pavilion. This does not include the event center. We're not touching those rates right now as those fall in line with everything surrounding us.
Y'all do a great job out there.
Appreciate it.
1250 for the Expo Center still seems very reasonable.
Oh, yeah.
We're trying to provide places for people to come, gun shows, antique shows, Raylana.
How many weekends has that been open over the last 12 months?
I'd say at least 50. I can get back to you on that, but it's every weekend.
No, 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 not used, open. How many times was it not, I'm sorry, that was a bad choice of words on my part. How many times was it not used?
I'll put it to you this way, excluding holidays, we were open this past weekend with a snowstorm and having the gun show. So almost every weekend, it is being utilized in some capacity.
Wow.
Are we the cheapest, or is that, I mean, that's not much money.
It ain't much at all.
It's not, but we like our spaces to be utilized and bring people into Conway that can provide our community with just various events. We want to make it affordable.
Because I've slipped since 2015, what were we charging?
Are you talking about 2010, when we originally, so? Yeah, so I can give you a couple of examples. Most things only went up $250. So the Expo setup breakdown day went from 500, and we're requesting 750. Expo event day was 1,000, and now we're looking at 1250. For instance, a table was $6 a day, and we're only going up to $7 a day. Chairs were two, and now we're going to three. So we're not price gouging by any means, but we still would like to kind of keep up with some of our fees.
Yeah, for sure.
I have a quick question on number four. I just mentioned security and clean deposit. Do we have, yeah, do we have much trouble out there of the place being not taken care of?
No, a lot of the people that we have are reoccurring vendors. They're really good about it. We don't typically have any problems, though, sir.
There is one change in number four on this ordinance. The third line where it says refundable proved, I think that probably should read refundable provided.
Provided, yes, sir.
So if y'all would make that, would that be correct, Andrew?
Yes. There's also one on five that I will note. It says access, and I think that should be assessed. So we'll make that note as well.
With those corrections, I will make make a motion that we approve the ordinance 02507, along with the emergency clause.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause updating the rates for the Conway Expo Center. Any further discussion? Ms. Heard.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
And the emergency clause, Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Those both pass eight to zero. Thank you, Andrew. Last tonight is the Public Safety Committee, and we have up consideration to approve the disposal of assets for the Conway Police Department, Chief Harris.
Good evening. So on this topic, we're requesting the removal of a 2010 Nissan Maxima and a 2011 Hyundai Sonata from our inventory that will be sold through auction.
A commotion that we dispose of these assets.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve this consideration to dispose of these assets. Any further discussion? Ms. Heard.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Next is ordinance to approve the appropriation of asset forfeiture funds for the Conway Police Department, chief.
So this one, past couple of years, we got into a contract with S7 Shooting Range, where we use certain number of allotted days. Long story short, they're through, their insurance rate's going up, materials going up, our rental rate has gone up as well. So I met with one of the owners after we turned in the budget and found out about the increased rate. So I'm just asking to use forfeiture money to pay the difference for this year.
Make a motion to pass the ordinance.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance, the appropriation of asset forfeiture funds for the Conway Police Department. Any further discussion?
Just a question, do we need an emergency clause on this, or?
No.
Oh, okay, all right.
While we're talking about this, counsel, everyone needs to get on their radar. We need to bring our range back into the city limits for our police department. We have a very large department burning the fuel to go out there and come back into town. I think it would, it is incumbent on us to look for a place to do this and to try to move forward with it sometime in the future. But I wanted to get it on your radar. Is that fair, chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is this adequate out there for you?
Yes, actually, yeah, they're great guys, and they, in this contract, we use, they allotted, plus it went up the number of days, so they allow us 100 days out of the year to go do it. And there's a calendar we can get on, and anytime we need it for, I hate to use the term emergency, but if somebody was off medical leave for a certain number of time and they have to re-qualify, the good thing is they do a lot of their competitions and everything on weekends, which we don't shoot on weekends.
Have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance? No further discussion, Ms. Heard.
This is 02508, Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
That passes eight to zero. Next, we have a, yes, sir.
I have a question about our old shooting range down there. Is it still viable? Is that land still viable? Do something with it?
Good question.
So the problem, obviously, it's been there a while, and then with the city being the fastest-growing city, then you have growth growing around the range. So that comes into, how much money do you spend to make sure you don't have a ricochet or something else? I mean, all around us now are, I think they're townhouses, and they're going to build more, budding up to Verco and everything else. So it's, we've looked at it before, and it was to put a roof over it, or it was kind of costly, so.
It's going to be tough to find.
It is. I agree, Mr. Ledbetter, it might be worth it to look at what it would take to make it safe, because I mean, the training around fire training grounds and the police training grounds were there before any of the, anything was built around it.
Yeah, and for the city, it's great to have, it's, I mean, we've built training center out there for classrooms and everything, and that's where the fire department holds their academies, and we do a lot of our training. So it's nice to have it all in one location. As well we're at now, if we do any type of training, firearm training, we have to go out to there and then come all the way back to the training center to do other stuff, so.
If you would, take a look into that, chief.
Okay.
Get back to council. Can't remember, did we make a motion and a second on this one yet?
We did.
All right. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
And we already voted, didn't we?
Already voted.
Yep, did we? See, I sat here and talked myself out of what we're thinking of. All right. Next up is ordinance to approve personnel changes, appropriate. Nope, 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 nope.
Number three.
That item is actually off, item E four. On the advice of the city attorney, we're going to pull it tonight. It will be back for you possibly in two weeks.
Pulling E four?
Yes, sir.
We still have to do E three.
You still got to do E four.
Ordinance to waive competitive bid process and purchase LPR equipment for the Conway Police Department.
I thought I was losing my job or something.
No, when I get to talking, I, I lose my place.
Slipping fall.
So this request is also to use forfeiture funds. And to give you a little history, back in April of twenty-two, this council approved an ordinance for us to purchase license plate reader cameras. Six for areas in the city. What we're doing now, they've worked great in solving multiple crimes and getting multiple suspects. So with, since they've done so well, we're looking to use forfeiture funds to add more to the city and cover, have more coverage for the city.
Ted, correct me if I'm wrong on this story, we had a shooting in Conway a while back and y'all were able to identify and trace the shooter's back to Little Rock and make an arrest?
Yes, so wi- with this camera system, the reason why Soul Source is the company that we're using, it's compatible with, we get these cameras. We have access to Little Rock who has them, North Little Rock who has them. So long story short, if a suspect flees and goes to a city that has these, which most central Arkansas agencies have these cameras, we have access to see that as well and vice versa.
And chief, when we talked about this, didn't you say that they also have the ability to, you know, in the event that somebody removes a license plate or somebody got, that you can tell it, I want to see all white Hyundai sedans? Am I recalling correctly there?
Yes, so for example, if, if we have a, somebody coming in, breaking into vehicles and somebody looks out and they say, well, I didn't get a good look at the license plate or I didn't get a look, but it was a white Ford truck and it was two thirty a.m. Well, we can type in white Ford truck during this timeframe and any cameras that we have in the city will pull up or that white, that white truck.
And I'm sure this has implications, and I'm sure it has implications past crime. I mean, for, you know, uh, missing elderly, something like that.
Yeah, I mean, it's for anything. And we've, we've used them and solved cases for other cities just with the six that we have. So now we're, get this approved, we'll have twenty-six cameras in the city.
Make a motion to approve the.
Second?
We have a motion, second, to approve this ordinance? Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
This is oh twenty-five oh nine, Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.